Welcome to the December 10th, 2024 Gloucester City Council meeting. This public meeting of the city council is recorded on Zoom with a link that is posted on the agenda. If you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you are watching on a computer or device, there is a raised hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. Technical difficulties arise and the Zoom link is interrupted during an in-person hybrid meeting of the city council and a quorum is present, the meeting may continue after efforts have been made to reestablish the link. The minute shall note the interruption. It is the finding of the city of Gloucester that no individual shall be denied equal treatment or opportunity because of their age, ancestry, color, disability, including intellectual and developmental, mental disability, family status, immigration status, gender identity or expression, military status, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex, or sexual orientation. In attendance tonight, we have Councilor, Ward Two Counselor Dylan Benson, Counselor at Large Valerie Gilman, Ward One Counselor Scott Memard, Counselor at Large Jeff Worthley, Ward Three Counselor Marjorie Grace, Counselor at Large Jason Grow, and I am City Council President Tony Gross, Counselor at Large. Tonight, we had Council Vice President and Ward Five Counselor Sean Nolan had to leave on emergency and Councilor Majota has a family conflict that has to, that he needed to attend to. We will have the, and we have Grace Poyer, City Clerk is in attendance. We have from the, oh, great. We have Jenny Benedict from the Sawyer Free Library is with us. We have Ben Lummis, Superintendent of Schools, Gary Frisch, CFO of the, of the schools. We have Kenny Costa, the City Auditor, and we have Bailey McCall from, who is our Sustainability Director. And I will, will recognize people as they come in if we have more city staff join us. We will now stand for the flag salute. Counselor Grow.
Pledge allegiance. Hi, of the United States of America. Secure the republic, for which it stands. One nation, of liberty.
Angled up in the wire underneath the dais. We will now have oral communications. The public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communication shall allow any resident and/or property owner and/or business owner who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, make their statement without debate, and the city council refer matters to the office of the mayor. Person speaking under oral communication shall be limited to three minutes each. Is there anyone in the auditorium who would like to speak under oral communications? Seeing none, is there anyone on, don't see any hands raised online. Madam Clerk, next order of business.
A presentation by Library Director Jenny Benedict and MAPC consultants regarding the Gloucester Digital Plan from the Massachusetts Area Planning Council.
So, good evening, Council. Thank you so much for the opportunity this evening to present Gloucester's first digital equity plan. So, this plan has been developed under the guidance of an excellent team of consultants from the Massachusetts Area Planning Council who will be making the presentation this evening. We also have a few notable community leaders who will speak after the presentation in support of digital equity as a priority for our community and our region. So, I am incredibly encouraged by the work that has taken place over the last year, moving the digital divide in Gloucester from one that was an issue that became very apparent during the COVID pandemic to one that now has an actual plan that drives the strategic investment of resources to deliver equitable access, opportunities, and outcomes for all households. So, I am delighted to welcome Stephen Larick and Will Pfeffer from the Massachusetts Area Planning Council. Can I have Sharon?
Oh. Can you go more?
So, I'm spinning over the presentation, but that's for the box. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jenny, and thank you to the council for this opportunity to speak today and to share some of the work that we've been up to over the past year. So, hi, everyone. My name is Stephen Larick. I am the Digital Services Manager for MAPC, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. Let me just see if I can get into the presentation here. There we go. So, I'm here today to talk to you about the work that we've been doing alongside the Sawyer Free Library and the city of Gloucester to put together a digital equity plan. I'm going to start with a little bit of background on just what is a digital equity plan? What was sort of the impetus for this work? I'm then going to turn it over to my colleague, Will Pfeffer, to speak a little bit to the findings, what actually resulted from the work that we've done, as well as the, the action plan, the recommendations that are now documented, as Jenny mentioned, in a way that hopefully sets up the community for eligibility for grant funds and for actually putting projects into the world that can help bring equity for our households. So, so who is MAPC? What was this team that was, that was coming up here to the North Shore to Cape Anne to help you all out? Well, MAPC is a regional planning agency for Greater Boston. We represent the 101 municipalities that you see on the map there, including much of the North Shore. And we have a multidisciplinary team of planners that, that advocates for smart growth, equitable development, and regional collaboration. And to support this digital equity planning effort, you can kind of see a lot of my colleagues here. My colleague Will and I are here today, but I really want to give a shout out to my colleague, Anaga Devon Orionan. She is our digital equity planner. She led a lot of this project work and unfortunately caught whatever's going around and she might be on Zoom later, but she unfortunately was not able to be here in person. In addition-
So, she is, she's in the attendees.
Oh, wonderful. So, yeah, if during the Q and A, if we could elevate her to just being able to speak, thank you. So, in addition to the technical assistance brought by our kind of planners and technologists, we also have a team of community engagement specialists who supported some of the outreach and engagement that you'll hear about later, as well as a data analysis team that, that kind of provided some of the mapping and, and number crunching that you'll hear about as well. So, to just level set, I wanted to make sure that we're kind of familiar with some of the jargon here of what is digital equity. A lot of folks may be familiar with this concept of the digital divide. And as, as Jenny mentioned, you know, a lot of municipalities in our region really started grappling with this in a bigger way after the COVID-19 pandemic. But just to level set, this idea of digital equity, this is really our response to the, the notion of the digital divide. We define digital equity as a condition in which all individuals and communities have the information technology capacity needed for full participation in our society, democracy, and economy. And if we think of digital equity, that's sort of the goal of, we want to get from digital divide to digital equity. And that work of getting there is digital inclusion, and that's sort of what we've put together in the plan that we're presenting to you all. So, kind of in the context of the digital divide and digital equity and post COVID-19 pandemic, the Massachusetts State Broadband Office, which is the Mass Broadband Institute, they put together a program to fund technical assistance to cities and towns for actually putting strategic plans focused on digital equity into action and to kind of develop those documents. And so, this work, this past year of work, this was fully funded by a grant, a technical assistance grant from the Mass Broadband Institute. And kind of in addition, what's so great about this program is in addition to putting a vision to paper and putting some recommendations to paper, this plan will also make Gloucester eligible for certain implementation dollars that's also offered by the Mass Broadband Institute. So, we hope this won't just be a plan on a shelf, but will be something that can actually put projects into action in the community. To get a little bit more specific about what the work of, of developing a digital equity plan entailed, we, we worked on this document in four phases, again, starting about a year ago. We were starting with gathering that initial context of existing conditions. This came a lot from, from, you know, looking at the data, desk research, those initial interviews. We then moved into community outreach and qualitative data analysis. We know that digital equity is, you know, by the very definition of digital divide, this is something that affects more, some households and some individuals more than others. And so, we really wanted to make sure that the voices of those most impacted were represented in this document. So, we conducted a number of outreach activities that you'll hear a little bit more about later. And then kind of the more recent work has been synthesizing all of that data gathering together and putting that into a document and a set of recommendations for the community. Throughout the work that you'll hear about, we also use this best practice framework of the three pillars of digital equity. You'll see those on the right-hand side of the slide. We know that folks need the literal technical access to the internet. They need an infrared hookup or, or a Wi-Fi signal in the home, in the workplace, in the places where they need to access the internet. But we know it also goes beyond just the literal signal. Folks also need access to a device that is performant enough, that is modern enough to use, take advantage of that broadband. And they also need this digital skills to know what to do with the internet, to know how to navigate applications, websites, that, all, all those facets of digital life that are, you know, so, so fundamental to our modern economy and our modern quality of life. So, you'll see those, those framings of those three pillars of internet service, device access, and digital literacy throughout the document and throughout our presentation today. I'm shortly going to turn it over to my colleague, Will, for going through the findings, what actually resulted from this work. But before I do, I wanted to just set up a little bit more about our approach. So, I, you know, as, I'm sure the council is, is fully aware, and I don't need to tell you, one of the core elements of digital equity is that it is not really a standalone issue. It is something that permeates into all other facets of, of kind of quality of life, of education, of housing. And so, we really tried to take that lens to the way that we approached this plan, to the data sources we gathered, the types of questions we asked our focus group participants. It's not just about technology for technology's sake, but what are you doing with that technology and how is it impacting other facets of life? And so, kind of in addition to thinking about this intersectionally, not just as a siloed issue, we also brought in both qualitative and quantitative approaches to the way that we did our research to put together this document. So, on the left, you can see that we brought, we did bring a quantitative approach of, of pulling in data sources. Some of those data sources were more general and contextual, things like demographic data. Some of them were specific to the issues of the digital divide, data sources that helped us understand device access, the actual infrastructure, things like performance of the internet here in Gloucester. And then on the right, you'll see that we, we also applied a, a variety of methods to outreach engagement. This included interviews with, with community leaders, with key stakeholders, as well as focus group discussions and meetings with some of the demographics that we know historically have been most impacted by the digital divide. And with that, I'm going to turn, turn it over to my colleague, Will Pfeffer, our civic technologist, to speak to what actually resulted from all of those methods and from this lens here in Gloucester.
Great. Thank you, Stephen, and thank you, Jenny. Good evening. As Stephen said, my name is Will Pfeffer. I'm going to present a little bit about both our findings from the digital equity plan and go through at a somewhat high level, some of the recommendations that we're proposing be included in the final version of the plan. So, I'll start with internet service. I think we, we often think about internet service as sort of the backbone of digital equity. It is the hardest to get to people, the most expensive to get to people, and, and without it, none of the, the rest of it really matters. What you see on the map here is that, this is essentially the darker areas of the map are showing you areas in which a higher percentage of people have no access, or a higher percentage of people are disconnected from the internet. We can see that that ranges from 20, from 17 to 26% of, of households with the highest concentration here in downtown Gloucester. One key element here is that, as anyone who lives in Gloucester knows, there is really only one option for what we call wireline or fixed, fixed internet service, which is Comcast. There are a couple of other options for satellite coverage, fixed wireless coverage. None of them really achieve the speeds that are possible through a fixed wireline service, and there are no options at the moment anyway for fiber service, which is the only real way to get the level of speed that is needed in, in the economy and in sort of online life One thing that we noticed in the American Community Survey data about internet connection is that the lack of internet service is, it really tracks with income. So, the lowest income, folks, the, the households earning under $20,000 a year, more than a third of them, or about a third of them, have no access to the internet at all. The next band that we see in the American Community Survey is between 20,000 and 75,000 a year. That's about 15% are disconnected. And then $75,000 a year and above, fewer than 5% of those households are disconnected. So, this really tracks with lower income households. And these are, these quotes are just a couple of examples of things we've heard from, from residents and community members about how the digital divide and how lack of affordable, reliable internet service is impacting them. There is more detail on this in the full plan, but this is what we have on the slide here. Device access is the next part of this. This is having both a smartphone, but also access to a computer with a larger screen and a real keyboard that you could use to access a government service, that you could use to do a job or a school online, or even apply for a job. We find, again, through the American Community Survey, that the level of device access tracks more or less the same as the rest of Essex County. There are two, there are two aspects here where it is a bit above the comparison communities, the Gloucesters neighbors that we've compared to, both in terms of households with no computer at all, and households that only have access to a smartphone, but no larger, more capable computer. Gloucesters rates of lack of access to those is a little bit higher than neighboring communities. Again, we have a couple of community quotes here from the focus groups and interviews that we did. One thing that we note here is that computer labs and public Wi-Fi networks are, well, more, more computer labs than just the public Wi-Fi network. But a computer lab is a way to mitigate to some degree, lack of individual computer access. That is, that can be a backstop or a last resort for folks. But there are a lot of factors that go into making that really work for people. So, a computer lab has to be physically convenient for a person to get to, especially for an older person or somebody who are living with disabilities. It can be challenging to get to the computer lab if it is somewhere far from your home. It also needs to operate at hours that work for you. If you're not working traditional nine to five, that could be, that can be challenging. And then, we find that learning to use a computer, if you didn't grow up using one, is challenging enough. When you layer on doing that in a language that you are still learning, that becomes even more complicated. And so, it has to be a, a resource that somebody can access confidently in a language they understand and feel welcome to, to use the resource. Moving on to digital literacy, this is a range of digital skills. They range from just being able to set up an email address and log onto a Zoom call so you can listen into a meeting like this one, all the way up to being job-ready. I think one of the statistics on one of the slides that Stephen showed earlier showed that 92% of jobs today require some level of digital skill. And gaining those skills is really crucial for being, people being able to participate in the economy. Another thing that we hear from residents, especially residents who are English language learners, is that they have real concerns and very valid concerns about internet safety, avoiding getting scammed online, avoiding getting their data leaked, avoiding getting their financial information leaked. And so, teaching people or giving people the, the skills and confidence that they can interact online without being afraid of having their, their entire online life leaked to somebody with, with malintent is really important as well. So, with those findings, I'll move through the recommendations somewhat briefly. Again, there's much more detail on these in the final plan, and we are happy to answer some questions about it. But just to give you an idea of some of the categories of recommendation that we're talking about, once again, starting with expanding internet access, we've divided these recommendations into some short-term and long-term recommendations. In the short term, we're making some recommendations around expanding publicly accessible free Wi-Fi access, and that includes both in the downtown area, at, in public spaces, like at the library or in municipal buildings. There are also a lot of opportunities to put free resident Wi-Fi networks in public housing and affordable housing sites, that there's a lot of funding and programs that exist right now to do that kind of thing. And then raising awareness of both those existing resources, as well as existing low-income qualified internet plans. So, Comcast, as, as do many of the, many of the major carriers, offer income-qualified plans where you could get your internet down, your internet bill down a bit every month if you knew about them and, and could apply for these, these services. And then in the long term, we make some recommendations around thinking strategically about how to expand that public Wi-Fi access around Gloucester, and then also working with the internet service providers to bring a little bit more competition, to bring higher quality service and more choices to people who live in Gloucester. For the purposes of the recommendations, we've grouped digital literacy and device access programs into one. We find that these work really well hand in hand, and a lot of the same service providers can provide both services. So, some of the short-term recommendations that you'll see on this slide include getting a better idea on an individual level, what people's digital needs are, both what they are trying to do and how the device they have is, is preventing them from doing that, and also just what skills they need to develop to get where they're trying to go online. This can be, these things can be accomplished through a variety of device distribution programs, whether it is device lending, device ownership, refurbished devices, and accessible and adaptable and adaptive devices for folks living with disabilities who have slightly different digital equity needs. And then, you know, providing computer classes, which, which many schools, libraries, and the like already provide, but focusing on things like basic computer skills, like online safety, like workforce readiness that we've talked about previously. And then in the long term, a lot of what we're recommending is about scaling those, those services, expanding those services, and making sure that those services evolve to meet people's needs in the long term. The skills that people need today are not the same as what they needed 10 years ago, and they won't be the same in 10 years from now. The final category that we have here of recommendations, we've bundled under a category called building capacity, and this is really trying to set the city of Gloucester and the other institutions that have participated in this planning process and who will ultimately be responsible for implementing parts of this planning process up for long-term success. A lot of the recommendations and a lot of the, the best practices for how to close the digital divide are complicated and they require a lot of resources. And so, as planners, we want to make sure that we are setting the client up with the, the tools they need to be able to actually do some of these things long-term. So, we have some short-term recommendations here that include forming a Gloucester Digital Equity Steering Committee to continue to hear feedback from the community organizations that have already very deeply informed this plan, launching the Digital Learning Lab at the Sawyer Free Library, we think is going to be a really great resource for residents, and I know we're very excited to see that launched. And then expanding the city's capacity to meet ongoing needs, to do the, the technical and financial work of continuing to expand these resources. And then also, one area that our plan didn't consider as a, as a central user group, but is really important, our small business owners, their digital equity needs, again, are different from an individual resident who is trying to get a job at a company, but they are very important and, and they can be the difference between success and failure for a small, a small business. So, with that, the plan draft is complete. It has been reviewed by the Massachusetts Broadband Institute, who is the funder and the State Broadband Office that Stephen mentioned earlier. We're incorporating some of their sort of final feedback in that plan. Ultimately, as the State Broadband Office, they are the ones who sort of accept this plan. We have, of course, worked very closely with the city and the library to develop it throughout. And we're also exploring, as Stephen mentioned, some pathways to funding to try to make some of these individual recommendations a reality here in Gloucester. So, one thing I'll mention that's not on this slide, which we should have put on this slide, but there is a digital equity plan website, which has more information on the city of Gloucester's website. It's digitalequity.gloster-ma.gov. We have Anaga's mine and Stephen's contact information here. I assume you all know how to get in contact with Jenny. But that concludes our presentation here. I know we have a couple of other speakers, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Fantastic. Thanks so much. So, I would like to welcome Melissa Diamond. She is certainly well-versed in the multiple intersection barriers that Gloucester residents face to digital equity, to say a few words.
Good evening. Nice to see you, and thank you to Jenny and MAPC. So, I'm the Executive Director at Wellspring, and there are a couple of points I just wanted to clarify. One, this is not for the city to do alone, and so I thought I would highlight some of the other things that are already happening in this community and why the digital equity plan is important, not only for the city, but to bring a number of groups together that are doing work that can really enhance one another, and also just to sort of shed light on some of the needs. So, for folks who may not know Wellspring that well, our mission is to help people achieve financial security, and we do that through a variety of vehicles, housing stability and job stability, including education and job training. One of our programs here in Gloucester is English for Speakers of Other Languages, which is located downtown. We rent space from Endicott College near the Boport, and when the Sawyer Free Library is open, we're there as well. We currently have about 150 local residents in that ESOL program every year, and we do a combination of English instruction to help people achieve greater English proficiency. But several years ago, we added to that program a digital equity component because we found that although we have certainly plenty of folks in our programs in Gloucester and other communities who have digital equity needs, the most profound needs are among folks who've recently arrived to the U.S. and might be learning English. And I think one thing I just want to clarify, my experience over many years is that folks who are recently arrived to the U.S. are actually often incredibly proficient about using the digital equity that they have. It's that they don't have the, the access that they need, meaning folks who are communicating with family back at home in Latin America, other countries, were predominantly on Facebook way before mainstream America was on Facebook because it was an inexpensive way to stay in touch with family at home, or WhatsApp, or other vehicles. So, just something to be aware of, but in case we, any of us have sort of bias about that, my experience is that folks will use the technology that they have access to, especially when they see value in it, meaning it's worth investing in. I'm less, much less concerned about making sure people know what's available than making it available. I find that the, you know, through word of mouth and social networks, people will use what's available when we make it. So, my personal preference professionally, personally, as a resident in Gloucester, I think one of the most important things we can do is have better public Wi-Fi access downtown. I think that would be a massive benefit, and it would allow groups like Wellspring to piggy, piggyback on top of that for better benefit. So, for example, the same entity that funded this study and the plan, the Mass Broadband Institute, is currently funding Wellspring. So, we now, for the next two years, and then it's through Mass Hire, and there's a federal grant pending that would extend it for two years further. So, we currently have funding through June of 2026, and we have a full-time person on our staff now who is a digital equity coach. And he's based here in downtown. He spends most of his time here in our space within our ESOL program, sometime at our offices in West Gloucester. And his job is to assess digital equity needs among English learners. We have access to devices that are refurbished, that we're giving to people, we're running curriculum for people to know how to use those devices, and then once they have that access, they can meet with a job and career coach to then get on with it and think about applying for new jobs or being in an online class, et cetera, et cetera. So, if we had better Wi-Fi access downtown, the folks who that, who are in our program, we're sort of taking care of at least some of the needs around assessing the gaps around digital equity and getting devices and getting skills to people, but it won't matter if they can't connect. So- access, they can meet with a job and career coach to then get on with it and think about applying for new jobs or being in an online class, et cetera, et cetera. So if we had better Wi-Fi access downtown, the folks who are in our program, we're sort of taking care of at least some of the needs around assessing the gaps around digital equity and getting devices and getting skills to people, but it won't matter if they can't connect. So, just like Will had said, so I just sort of highlight that. I don't think of it as the city's job alone. If there is a steering committee or an entity that meets ongoing, I'd love for Wellspring to be part of that, and I think I'll leave it at that.
So thank you, Melissa. And I'd also like to welcome up, and I'm so grateful that you're here in Gloucester with us this evening, so Penny Hasely and also Ed O'Sullivan are here from the Mass Hire Metro North Workforce Board and the Mass Hire North Shore Workforce Board, and they have exciting news about a program that they're bringing to Gloucester.
Good evening. My name is Penny Hasely, and I work at the Mass Hire Metro North Workforce Board in Somerville. We're one of the 16 Mass Hire Regional Workforce Boards in the state, and we represent the 20 cities and towns north of Boston. We do partner with the North Shore Workforce Board often on grants that we see affecting residents and businesses across the state. So the mission at Mass Hire is really to connect job seekers to employers and businesses. And the last few years, it became very clear that the digital divide was truly impacting opportunities of success and economic mobility for residents in Massachusetts. So we did partner with the North Shore Workforce Board, and we applied for a grant through the Mass Broadband Institute, which provided funding for two to three years to create a digital equity consortium. It funds 22 organizations across the Metro North and North Shore region, including Wellspring House, and we fund digital navigators, which are these digital equity coaches at community organizations to help people with everything from connecting them to computer literacy classes, find them a laptop, find them a hotspot, how do I get access to my Facebook, how do I pay this telehealth bill? We just started collecting the data on the services we've been providing, and the top populations that are coming seeking our services are actually the elderly population. So that is just a data point that we're just seeing in the beginning stages of this consortium. We also fund digital literacy classes and device distribution so that residents can get access to full-fledged laptops with Microsoft Office, and they're trained on how to use Microsoft so they can access those jobs. So I'm speaking here on behalf of not just as a workforce expert, but also as a resident of Gloucester. When you look at the last year in the Commonwealth, there were nearly a million job postings. Eight percent of those job postings were remote jobs. The data shows that the salaries for remote jobs are nearly double the salaries that are advertised for in-person jobs. So as a Gloucester resident, for me, I'm really, I do get concerned that residents here don't have those doors to economic mobility with the poor Internet here. I struggle to do my remote job here on the island because the Internet is so poor. I'd rather commute to Gloucester, to Somerville, to do my job. And I also just experienced small businesses struggling on Main Street in Gloucester Crossing with simply just using the Internet to process payments. So there really is a need for the city to invest in this, and as Melissa said, the city doesn't have to do it alone. There are so many municipalities across Metro North and North Shore that are also looking into this. It looks different for every community of the solution, so I just urge the council to consider the recommendations and keep listening to the feedback. So thank you.
Good evening. My name's Ed O'Sullivan. I'm the Executive Director of Mass Hire North Shore Workforce Board. We represent the 19 cities in town, from Lynn up to Rockport, and we have a career center located in Salem, but a lot of the work that we do is out in the various cities and towns across the North Shore. Just want to talk a little bit about our digital literacy program, which we're developing out of the grant that we've received from the Mass Broadband Institute. This is a new arena for us to get into, but within the world of work, digital literacy is paramount. I heard this statistic of 92% as being a benchmark. I think it's probably going to continue to grow. Many of the entry-level jobs that are out there require some degree of digital literacy, and that's using a tablet, using Windows, using an iPhone, for example. So we've actually kind of broken it down into three courses that we're going to focus on over the next two years. But the first course is the most important, and it's a Windows 101 course, which really introduces the user into the basic platform of Windows, also touching on Word, PowerPoint, Outlook, and Excel, and getting them used and comfortable with that as a tool on the job. The second course that we're going to focus in on is a more advanced Excel class. A lot of jobs out there require a degree of mastery of Excel, so we're going to focus on that. And the third course will be a basic web design course. So we're going to be doing those courses in two locations, one in Lynn Pathways, which is an adult basic education provider, as well as up here in Gloucester at Wellspring. North Shore Community College is actually the provider of the course, and Mass Hire is actually going to support the class by bringing in career coaching advisors to work with the participants as they enter into the world of work.
Thank you. And I think with that, we will turn it over to council for questions.
Questions? Council Gilman.
Thank you, Jenny and team. So I've got a question about the status of our regional Comcast group. And in looking at our data online, it appears that the last time that they met was in 2016, and there's actually minutes summarized from a former mayor, Safatia Romey, taken. And one of the things that she says, that unless there's political will to finance a regional technical analyst to help navigate the fact that Comcast is the lone provider, that it just seemed like this committee was not doing what they really wanted to do. So I'm just throwing that out there for your input, because obviously, our budget situation is very tough right now, but I'm just interested in what your take is in terms of how important that is to things like the downtown issues of coverage and adequate service. Just throwing that out.
So thank you for that question, Councilor Gilman. I think I do have a spot of bright news on that front. I think in many ways, the Massachusetts Broadband Institute has taken over that sort of role of, and it would be Commonwealth-wide, planning of infrastructure investment. So in, I'm not sure exactly which month, but they did award Verizon with a large contract to bring service out to Gloucester, and I believe that that will come into the community by the end of next year. So we will have a competitive marketplace here.
Do you follow-up question for the chair, ma'am? So do we see, therefore, the re-establishment of this type of committee, because now there would be more than one provider? And is there a benefit to having that in terms of a regional group that kind of keeps on top of this to make sure we don't fall off our mark?
Off the radar. So, and I'd be happy for Stephen to comment, because I think at MAPC, they have that regional sort of lens, and happy for you to follow.
Well, yeah, I mean, I thought first and foremost, we'll plug that, you know, as an agency that supports regional collaboration, we would love to see that type of thing, and our hope is not to deliver this plan and disappear, but to continue to be a support for the community of Gloucester. And so, you know, I think as other options enter the marketplace, I do think there's a lot to be done. I think we have found that it can be challenging to work with ISPs, but the communities that are actively reaching out to the government affairs folks and making sure that, say, folks are aware of new options, that the kind of subsidized plans that Will was mentioning earlier, that those are being promoted so that the households that qualify are able to access those. There's a lot of ongoing work and coordination that needs to happen, and one of the recommendations that was mentioned was this idea of a steering committee, and I think one of the themes that we heard, you know, not just in our plan, but from the testimony here, was this idea that the city doesn't need to do it alone. So I do think that idea, whether it's regional collaboration, working with community-based organizations, it's going to take a village to make sure that, you know, outcomes and performance of the Internet here in Gloucester not only improves, but kind of keeps improving. Anything to add to that, Will?
Thank you very much. That was a fascinating presentation.
Council Wirthly.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for the presentation, Jenny. You always enlighten us every meeting. I'm not sure exactly who the question is for, but I've got three quick questions. Is there, regarding these classes, an integration with the school system for either people who are learning English as a second language, or someone who's got younger children who are learning that as well? Is there integration with the school department at that level? I think you said you're renting an office on, did you say Elm Street? I'm not sure.
Well, it is true that many of our students are Gloucester Public School parents, and that's something that we're in, have been in ongoing conversation with the school's administration for a number of years. We certainly, there's probably more opportunity to make sure that as many parents know about the opportunity as possible, but, you know, the majority of students, the students that are adult students, are parents in Gloucester, which means they most likely have school-age children or soon-to-be school-age children.
What I was getting at is, the kids might be learning at school, and the parents, either because they're older and stubborn, or, you know, they're not as enlightened, they're not in the learning environment as much, they probably are speaking their native language at home and not maybe reinforcing what the kids are learning, but if there's a way for the students who we know are English-as-a-second-language learners to have some communication through the schools to their parents about an opportunity to learn, students as well, and the whole community. So I just wanted to, since the superintendent here was just, throw that out there as an idea to integrate.
And I think, I guess I'll just add that one of the curriculum components that we have is how parents can be an active participant in their student's education, knowing how to communicate with teachers, knowing how to, getting trained on the Google Suite so that they can actually see what their kid's homework is and follow along. So that's actually one of the curriculum pieces that we have, so that parents can be a more active participant in their kid's education.
I heard some mention about classes, web design, Excel, and there's a third one. What are the criteria for someone taking those classes? Is there, is it income-based, or is it based on their Internet access? I just want to, I forget who mentioned that. I think it was a gentleman in the back.
So the eligibility varies. Sometimes it's based off the communities. Communities under the grant are designated as anyone is eligible. If you're not in that community, it looks at census tracts, and then there is a different level. But we do try and find as many ways as we can to screen people in, and if they don't meet eligibility, we recommend them to another.
Any other questions, but I'm being superseded. Thank you.
Council Gro.
Thank you for the presentation. Very quickly, a couple of things. First, Jenny, if you could, could you remind us of the expanded opportunities at the library when it's completed through its renovations, the increase in facilities that are going to be available to the public? And then I've got a question for folks about capital improvement.
Yes, so thank you for that question. So the 2025 Sawyer Free Library that we will be opening next year has a dedicated digital learning lab. That space will both serve basic digital literacy needs. So one of the things that we are opening that space with will be a basic digital literacy program, and then also serves independent learners. So you can come in and have an orientation to the lab and then use all the equipment that's there. Some of the equipment that'll be on-site will be workstations that are specific to digitization, so people can bring in photographs and materials to put into digital format. We will also have digital media creation stations with the appropriate software. So we look at this as being support to people who are in classes, that then they can come to the library and also practice and use the facilities that are there.
Great. The next question, very quickly, is, so we're talking about if we wanted to look at putting together a robust enough public network downtown, because the more people that are on it, the more slowly it operates. What kind of capital improvements are we looking at in terms of dollar figures and the expanse of that program? And then I want to piggytail that.
I've got three questions.
Piggyback?
It's one question. It's one long question. That kind of, that kind of, that kind of impact of investment, how is that impacting our competitiveness in terms of attracting employers and in attracting a workforce? We don't have, are we not providing the opportunities for workforce to expand their digital knowledge, and are we not able to, because of the lack of investment, able to attract increases in high-level businesses and industries? Is there a direct correlation between the investment in that and attracting that kind of employment?
Thank you for those additional questions. One comment that I will make is that the 2025 Soil Free Library, the entire building, is a big wireless Wi-Fi hotspot, and so we will be able to accommodate many people in different parts of the library who can come in and take advantage of that. I think what you also saw in the recommendations was that there are also broader, either exterior Wi-Fi public access that could be on Main Street, it could be in parks, ways for the public to access Wi-Fi that way. I think we're just beginning the feasibility study to understand what the cost of a system like that is. I expected council to ask the questions, well, what can we do? And so one of the, one of the aspects of council's involvement in this is to look at, through O&amp;A, look at the ordinances that are around laying conduit and infrastructure for broadband Internet. So I think if you look at your ordinances currently, they address towers, which were very big at one point, but if you look at wiring, then the wiring speaks to telegraph, telephone, electric, but I don't think there's any mention in there of broadband infrastructure. So there are things that the city can do to enable public rights-of-way, where a conduit can be laid when other public projects are happening, and that can facilitate then an infrastructure, a complete infrastructure plan. The rest of your question, I'm going to pass over to Stephen, who probably has a broader lens of what he has seen in other communities.
Yeah, and I'll follow up on what Jenny was already mentioning and say that oftentimes, I think, providing Wi-Fi in public space, that's something that can be started with looking at where is there already, you know, Gloucester has its own network, and so where does the municipality already have existing infrastructure that could maybe be used to provide that signal? And that can often be a lower-cost way of getting started than adding new infrastructure. And one of the things that MAPC, just as a consultant that's working with a number of communities, we've worked on other digital equity plans. One of the plans we're doing right now is in Greater Lowell, and a couple of the communities there have done some extensive Wi-Fi-in-the-park type of initiatives. And so I know one of the items that I promised Jenny is to reach out to that community and ask them for some of those numbers, so that we can make sure that you have some benchmarks like that. But that last thing that I'll plug is that there are some programs out there. So UMass Lowell has been funded by the Mass Broadband Institute to provide support for Wi-Fi in public spaces, and they have grants to do that. And so certainly, they'll both have figures on what does this typically cost on a project basis, but also some of the funding to maybe help get that going and get that started. And in addition to the idea of access in public spaces is also, we know, again, that this is an issue that affects certain households more than others, and one of the kind of sites that are potentially subsidized or low-income affordable housing. And so I don't know if, Will, you'd want to say anything about the apartment Wi-Fi program or residential retrofit? And maybe some of the, I know we do have cost benchmarks for Wi-Fi networks within apartment buildings.
One of the other projects that I work on at MAPC is a project in partnership with Housing Authorities and Affordable Housing Developments, in which we have some grant funding also from the Mass Broadband Institute, they are the primary funder in this space at the moment, to build a network in a housing authority building, much like a public building like this, with shared equipment, that is a single connection to the whole building that everybody can use free of charge. That is a pretty effective way to reach the lowest-income folks, or at least the lowest-income folks who have access to subsidized housing. And we find that, you know, that can run, maybe a hundred-unit building could, it would cost a couple hundred thousand dollars to build it, there's a lot of grant funding for the capital expenses right now, the ongoing operating expenses are always the trickier sort of long-term problem to solve, especially for housing providers. And our goal is always to make that about thirty dollars per unit per month in operating expenses, so about on par with what some of the lowest, some of the income-eligible service tiers are on the private market right now. There's also a program through the Mass Broadband Institute called the Residential Retrofit Program, in which they are working with affordable housing sites and public housing sites just to upgrade the in-building infrastructure. A lot of these older buildings, especially public housing, have really old infrastructure, it's copper wires that were put in for telephone and cable television, and it doesn't really matter how fast of a connection you connect to the outside of the building, by the time it gets to someone's Wi-Fi access point, it's slowed way down, it's not really usable, and people cannot get the service that they're paying for. So that's another way to improve the infrastructure, and, you know, that doesn't actually provide an end-user service, but it facilitates a much higher-quality service. I think one last thing that I'll leave this thought with is that one of the most crucial things, and it is challenging just geographically here in Gloucester, is that fiber Internet is really the only way to get a high enough bandwidth to facilitate any of these things. And so however you get fiber into the, into the city, whether that is through the private market, whether that's through public investment, whether it's through some kind of partnership, that is sort of a thing that will need to happen eventually in order to facilitate connections that will continue to serve people's needs, or even come up to people's needs today.
Counselor Worley.
Thank you. Jenny, you anticipate my question, and what can the council do to be helpful? And I appreciate that initial suggestion. I'm sure there's probably other ways too. In a prior life, I was the executive director of the Salem Chamber of Commerce, and we did a wire-cutting ceremony with now Lieutenant Governor Driscoll, she was the mayor at the time, and we really had an organization that was partly nonprofit, public sector and private sector, really partnering to bring that effort. Do you have that organization in place right now, or are you also looking to develop that?
So I would say this planning process brought a lot of key stakeholders to the table, and the recommendations that are in the plan were collaboratively built. We do not have a formal committee structure at this point. I think a number of different potential structures have been contemplated, and currently where it sits is stakeholders have expressed that they're very comfortable with this effort being co-led by myself and the Director of IT from the City of Gloucester, and I'm looking forward to meeting that person soon.
Yeah, true.
And that if, and to have it, has a digital equity steering committee with representation, yes, both from community stakeholders, from key city departments. I will say Alex Copelman came to the table, Vicky Stringfellow, who was a part of the, part of this process, and then the link to the service providers, I think, has really been through the city IT director. There are other ways to go about this, certainly, if the will of council is, we would like to see a more formalized committee with committee appointments, that would be certainly something, you know.
Not us.
You're like, no, not us.
Oh, it's not us. We confirm them, we don't appoint them.
Right. Fantastic.
Great committees.
So I think that's the way it will move forward in the short term.
Two last questions. So you mentioned our IT department, and I don't remember the exact number, but I do think we approved a, I think, a seven-hundred to eight-hundred-thousand-dollar appropriation for fiber optic to be installed, and I think there was a partnership with, maybe Essex?
Rockport.
And to Rockport. So I don't know if that connectivity is connected to what you're working on right now. Yeah.
Yeah, that was municipal, municipal-to-municipal connections, I believe. Yeah.
So you're, you are aware of that and working with?
Yes.
Okay.
It's not private.
Right. And the last question is, today, Counselor Gross taught me something about Gmail that I had no idea on how to do, and I was impressed. The young lady in the back here said that you found that your most active user are the elderly, and I wondered, how do you define elderly? Present company excluded, but is there an age point where you were saying this group of people are using? Yes, be careful. How are you defining that?
The population seeking services.
So when residents request services through our digital navigators, they actually have to fill out a form where they select their age, and it's sixty-five and older.
Right. Well, I was just going to say that I learned something from somebody that might be in that age group today, so thank you.
Counselor Benson.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. My first question was looking at the slides, and we were talking about those in the downtown area, around seventeen to twenty percent not having access to the Internet, and I looked at a number that was on there, it said thirteen thousand two hundred fifty-nine. Is that how many folks do not have access? Just to clarify what that number is, looking at it, I just like clarification on that.
I believe there, yeah, there are thirteen thousand, thirteen thousand four hundred eighty, I believe, households in Gloucester.
Okay. Thank you. My other question, thank you for that. I was just, couldn't fully. My other question is, like, we're talking about what can the council do, and thinking about what some of the things we can do, and as you were saying, like, businesses not having acts, not having problems with connection, with payment, I've seen that going up to Gloucester Crossing, going up to other areas. What are some, what, if you could elaborate, what are some things that we as the council can do with this digital divide? And we're talking, and also if they can add, is what, how do we make fiber optics a reality here in this community? That's just my question. If you could just elaborate of what we can do when we're looking at the ordinances that you spoke to, is what we specifically can do as the council? Because this is an issue, I mean, I remember meeting folks and talking about their not having access to the Internet, and their kids doing homework in a parking lot. So this is a real issue, especially in the downtown area, people that I represent. So just to, just to, if you could say, what, what can we do?
Well, I mean, I think embracing, you know, the plan that we're bringing before you, and being an advocate of it, is a very powerful statement on the part of council. Certainly, I think you will see the administration and senior managers that this work is folded, you know, into their priorities, and their recommendations will then come forward to council for consideration. So I think tonight's presentation gives you the context to understand the importance of those recommendations as they come forward.
And just if I may, you spoke, if I could speak, ask the folks, you talked about how can we actually make fiber optics, how do we get it here? How do, how does that happen? And then also, speaking to what some of the other councils are talking about, about the monopoly that Comcast has, how do we end that monopoly? Because that is a, that is a problem. If, those are two questions, I'm just, if we can think about that, I mean, it's a long-term goal, but how do we actually make that a reality, so we have more, more competition here in the community, and also how do we make fiber optics happen here?
So, yes, so Verizon will be coming to Gloucester by next December, that is a funded project.
Okay.
So that'll give us two Internet service providers and bring that market competition. In terms of the laying of fiber, I'm not sure we have the expertise in the room to answer that question tonight, because the Director of IT is certainly the one who has the most expertise on that.
And lastly, if I may, oh, well, there were many people that had many, I mean.
I hope.
I'm almost, I just wanted to speak to, I'm getting ready to hurry up, but anyway, I wanted to speak, if you could just speak a little more about the idea of having Internet access in, say, senior housing, public housing, this idea is really, seems like a really good idea, and I think in the downtown area where there are predominantly all of our public, most of our public housing is in the downtown area, and also most of our senior housing is, is, this is something I think we really should be thinking about, is like, how do we do it? Like, what kind of grants can we get? And obviously, maybe it means that folks are paying, like you said, thirty dollars extra for Internet access, but that's something we should be thinking about, and I think it's a phenomenal idea. But, and that, I will leave it, because I know I can't have any more questions.
Well, you're gonna have more questions.
No, no.
Anyway.
So I'll just comment, Counselor Benson, that Gloucester, that Gloucester Housing Authority was a part of this planning process, so they are well-apprised of the opportunities for funding that are available through the Massachusetts Broadband Institute, and are actively following those funding opportunities.
Counselor Grace.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I find this all very exciting. You know, I live, I live in this void with elders in my life that, you know, they get a bill from Leahy and they have no clue how to pay it, what it is, how to access it, they don't have an email, so what, what program would you have, or what steps would you have to reach out to the elderly? Because not all of them live in senior housing, you know, my mother-in-law doesn't, and she doesn't even have an email, everything has to come through me, you know? And I, and I don't know that much, I need a class, trust me.
So the, Elise Sinagra from the Council on Aging was also part of this project process, and I will say that both at the Rosebaker Senior Center and at the library, when I talk about having a computer basics course, I mean that we start with, this is the on button. So it's, you know, what is this, what does it do, vary from the very basic building blocks, and certainly, we welcome.
I mean, I, myself, my career was in healthcare, I worked in an operating room, I never touched a computer. I can talk to you about anatomy all night, but, you know, nothing, you know, if it wasn't for my daughter, she's my own, you know, live-in IT director, I drive her nuts, so I think this is fabulous, thank you.
So you said it was thirty dollars per unit per month is the cost to deliver this to every house?
That is the goal. It does vary based on location and based on, you know, a building built of concrete and brick is much harder to get Wi-Fi service into than a building built out of wood and drywall, but that is our cost goal.
But that's ongoing cost, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. Who funds the Mass Broadband Institute?
Most of the funding for this particular program is through ARPA. I would say the vast majority of their funding is federal, both through ARPA and the bipartisan infrastructure law. They have a variety of federal digital equity funding at the moment.
That's a little worrisome. And have you made this presentation to the mayor? Because we don't have any purse strings, as you understand, so I would suggest that maybe, that the mayor be apprised of this, of this effort, because that's where you want.
Yes, and just wanted to assure council that actually, the mayor did see a full presentation on this prior to coming to council.
Excellent. Thank you. And, you know, a lot of great questions, you know, the monopoly that Comcast has is a much larger question, but it's being, you know, there is satellite, which breaks the monopoly, they offer Wi-Fi, and, which is through AT&amp;T now also, and then varieties bring in. And we heard seven hundred thousand dollars just to do municipal with fiber optics, so it's, this is no small venture, but it's something that's necessary for us to move forward. And thank you so much for this, this presentation.
I just have a question. For years, Verizon has said, no, we can't bring FiOS in here. What has changed that now it's on the, on the, that it's potentially?
They've been funded.
Okay. Fair enough.
We're at the end of the line, they already, they've moved up to us.
It's been, you know, decades, they're like, sorry, can't do it, never coming, never happening, so it's nice to see that the tide's turned a little bit. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all the questions. Have a great evening.
Thank you, everyone. I'd like to also recognize Jill Cahill has joined us, and next order of business, Madam Clerk. So we're going to take the council vote item number one out of order, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to take a motion, or motion to take it out of order.
Or just, no, just take it out of order, so just make the motion.
I'd like to make a motion to refer this back to the Human Rights Commission for more community input.
Counselor Worley?
Thank you, Counselor Gross. The Human Rights Commission voted at their June meeting to, their motion was to ask the mayor to ask the council to rescind, and now we're sending it back to the AHRC, for some reason, it's not clear. I appreciate the work that they did on this, but I would like to spend a minute talking about, what we have on the books is really good, and Counsel Benson brought that to us, I give him credit, I think we all did, and it's really thoughtful, and the focus is on supporting our local, on the motion.
But it's the point of order.
The point of the motion is on referral back to the Human Rights Commission, not the, not the integrity of the document itself.
It is the referral back.
Wait on it. What we are referring back is the subject. It's not just the motion to refer, yeah, that's the question, and then what are we referring?
The only question we're looking at right now.
Well, it's not the only question we're looking at. We're asking a board of volunteers to do work on something that they're not asking us to do work on.
They have asked us to refer it back to them.
That's not what their, that's not what the minutes say, and I'm looking at them right now. So let's just be clear, we can pretend it's something else, but what it really is, I think discussion on the motion is fair.
Make it brief, or.
Well, their motion.
Come to the point, thank you. That's all.
What's that?
Go ahead.
Okay, so they made a motion asking the mayor to ask the council to rescind our prior vote. He hasn't.
That is not what is before us.
I know, so now we're sending something back to them.
Right.
That is not, which came before us for vote, and we, but we're sending back their resolution. But they didn't in here say that they want to review it further.
I'd be happy to explain.
But hang on, I'm just reading the minutes, and that's.
I'd be happy to explain.
I'm asking for your explanation, Counselor. I'm reading the minutes.
I'd be happy to explain.
No, excuse me. We're referring this back to the Human Rights Commission. That's the vote.
You're deciding on whether we want to refer it back.
Yes, the vote is to refer it back. Do you have a discussion on the referral?
If we vote no to send it back, then where do we stand?
If we vote no to send it back, then we, we have for council vote at the end, but let's have the vote to refer first.
Okay, so on the motion to vote, to refer to them?
Yeah.
I think the question is, do we want to ask this volunteer committee to do more work on something that we do or don't want them to work on?
That's not, we're not asking that question, we're asking whether or not we would like to refer it back.
Do you have a second on that motion to refer back? Okay. So, so we're in discussion of that.
We're just referring this.
Okay.
I mean, I understand your point, but we're just referring this.
Sure.
On the referral only? Yes, that's what it's on, is, the question is if we do not refer it back, would we vote at the, my understanding is we would vote at the end on adopting this, is that correct? Is that correct?
We have a motion that has been moved up to this out of order. The motion says, refer the Human Rights Commission resolution back to the Human Rights Commission. That is what is before us. That is the motion that is before us. It is not whether or not we rescind. It is not anything. It is just referral back. And unless we have any other discussion, only discussion now is on referral.
On the referral.
On a referral that is within us, I don't think we need.
The chairman, the chairman of the Human Rights Commission has requested that this be resented back to them because they have received some requests for more community input. That is what they have wanted us to do. So that's why we're bringing this forward, to return, refer this back to them so that they can get more community input on resolution and then further refine the recommendation back to the city council. I don't see any problem with that one at all.
Counselor Grace, did you have something?
I was just gonna say, Counsel Grow said he had an explanation, and I think he should be allowed to give it, which he did, so.
Oh, it's referred back.
Thank you.
Can we just?
I'd like to speak on the motion. I'd like to support this. I'd like to support this motion to refer back to the Human Rights Commission. Counsel Grow is our ex officio member of the Human Rights Commission liaison. And I think that, you know, I think it's important that we do so. So I will be supporting that referral back to the Human Rights Commission. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. We don't need a roll call on this, do we? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay. The, the ayes have it. Six to two? Nope. Oh. Five. Five to two. Yep, and two absent.
Thank you.
Oh, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda.
Does anyone have anything they would like removed from the consent agenda? No? I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Worthy, seconded by Counselor Gilman. All those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Seven in favor and two absent. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The December 5th Budget and Finance Standing Committee report.
If I may, Counselor Memhard, can we take out of order and do number five? Item number five first? Thank you.
And I'll just comment that at the request of Superintendent Lummis, item number five has been a friendly amendment to update it in regard to what we considered it, Budget and Finance. And if you'd like to speak before I go ahead with the motion, or would you like me to read the motion first?
I'm willing to. Either or.
I'll read the motion. Budget and Finance, on a motion by Counselor Grow, seconded by Counselor Worthy. On a motion by Counselor Gross, seconded by Counselor Worthy. Budget and Finance Committee voted by roll call three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council approve under Mass General Law Chapter 4464 to pay retro wages incurred in the total amount of $218,747.01 to the Gloucester Association of Education Paraprofessionals, or GAEP, from fiscal year 2024 to be paid with fiscal year 2025 school department budgeted funds. The return, the return to work agreement negotiated with GAEP and the school committee agreed to pay the retro wages on the payroll warrant dated December 13th, 2024, and I so move.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Memhard, seconded by Counselor Worthy. Discussion, and I guess Superintendent Lummis, do you, would you like to make a brief statement?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. President and Ms. Memhard, for taking us out of order. Just to explain a few things about the numbers here, so as you know.
Can you talk into the microphone, please?
Is that better?
Love to speak into it.
So there are a number of different categories here. First salary, and these are all FY24 wages. And they're the difference between what we already paid folks last year, you know, their regular payments, and that's a regular timeframe, and what has now been negotiated that are increases. They aren't the increase themselves, the difference between what we paid last year and the new rates. And there are a variety of new rates or that impact. But first of all, you have, the first line item is $191,000 approximately for salary. There's a difference between the wages for people we're earning, our paraprofessionals were earning last year versus the new wages and the new placement on the salary scale, where it says GAP sub. So when paraprofessionals substitute for teachers, they are, they earn, they work for more than hours substitute, they get paid a time and a half. That's the difference between time and a half last year, FY23 wages, and what the new rate is for time and a half. Some paras will spend, will earn extra hours submitted through their timesheets for just additional work that they're asked to do. And you see that that's the difference between what they were paid last year for those extra hours and what they're paid at the new rate. Same thing for summer hours. And that's FY24 summer hours, so June and July of 2023 is when, it was when that time was worked. And then the docking is, if you, if folks were docked last year in FY24 for missing days for whatever reason, they are now being paid at a higher rate. So there's a, they have to dock them more, okay, than they were last year, if that makes sense. The longevity payments, so we negotiated higher longevity payments for our most veteran paraprofessionals. And because they're higher rates, we paid them longevity a year ago, but now have to pay them more for those increased rates. And then the high needs stipend, so on our district-wide special education programs, which are at all levels but not all schools, we have a six, prior to this new contract, a $600 stipend for the paraprofessionals to work in those programs. That's an increase of $1,000 per person. And so that's the difference there between $600 and $1,000 per paraprofessional participate or works rather in those special education programs. So that all totals $218,747,000, $218,747.01. That's reduced from when we were in front of BNF last week because we just had nailed down the final numbers in the work with payroll since then. That was basically Fridays and Mondays work. And that would be in there on Thursday.
Questions? Counsel Grow.
Just want to clarify for people that this number is the difference between what would have been if the contract had been settled on day one at the rates that it was that back in the time ago.
Right, right. Yeah. I mean, there's, it's exactly right. And what happens in any contract year, and it's the same with this fiscal year too, is we continue paying people at the, at the contract, at the agreed-upon rate in the prior contract that extends and all the rules in those do as well. But because the paras and the school community did not agree until, you know, through the fiscal, whole fiscal year, we had essentially have to come to the city council to get approval to spend FY25 dollars for FY24 expenditure. And that's the reason I'm here. There will also be retro wages between the beginning of this fiscal year and the time the contract is approved, but because it's the same fiscal year, you don't need any approval. Does that make sense?
Counsel Benson.
You know, you answered my question. It was, this was, this is retro, right? Correct?
Just for FY24.
Just for FY24 retro going in from the contract, understanding like working in municipality, when contracts are agreed, this is, this is retro pay that they are getting, correct?
Yeah, because the contracts all are effective as of the beginning date. In this case, for the paraprofessionals, it's July 1st, 2024, 2023, sorry.
2023, but it's FY24 contract, right? Yep. All right, thank you.
Seeing no other questions? Oh, Counsel Worthy.
Thank you. So firstly, I'd love when you come up for us and ask us for $70,000 or so less than you asked us on Thursday. I think that's the number was maybe $65,000. If you want to wait till tomorrow, we can make it a lower number.
Nope.
No, good.
Is it ready to be paid out on Thursday evening?
I understand. You had said something, I just want to make sure I understood it correctly. We're in fiscal year 25 and we're asking to pay for some expenses for fiscal year 24, but you mentioned summer, June, July of '23 in your comments. I'm not sure if it was.
Yeah, so fiscal year 24 goes from July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2024.
Oh, so when you said June and July, in a way it was like July and June.
Yeah. Oh, sorry, July, July, sorry, July, August, July and August, sorry, 2023. Sorry, not June, July, July.
Okay. I'm not trying to correct you. Just make sure I got it right.
Thank you, yep.
24. FY24, but calendar year 24. Yeah. Just make sure we're doing this right.
July and August, 2023.
And this is money that's coming out of funds that the school department already has.
Yeah, our offering is FY25.
Okay.
And we planned ahead of time.
I know you did.
Yeah. And knowing that at some point we would agree, the school community and GAP would agree. And so we essentially set aside those dollars by, or made those dollars available in FY25 by prepaying special education costs at the end of FY24.
It's confusing to me, too. So you couldn't prepay the contract, but you're prepaying, you prepaid special education costs, which saved money.
They have the money in the budget.
Right.
Bottom line.
I'm trying to be helpful here. So this is not an additional expense in your budget?
No. We're not coming to you asking for additional money. We're coming to you just for permission to spend FY25 dollars, sorry, yeah, for an FY24 expenditure, these wages.
Okay. Thank you for helping me understand it.
And I'd just like to congratulate you, Ben, on this accomplishment and getting this resolved for the city's sake and all of our teachers and all of our students' sake.
Well, I appreciate that, Counsel Memhard. A lot of folks had a lot of work that did on it, played a role, obviously. And if you want to hear any more details about what the contracts have in them, I'll be giving a full update tomorrow night at the school committee meeting, and you can either be there or tune in. Because there are quite a bit, in addition to some significant wage increases for both the paraprofessionals especially, but also our teachers, there's a lot of stipulations there for training and development of paraprofessionals, but also some really important aspects of improving teaching learning as well. Very excited about it, yeah. It's very, very, very good agreements that are for, extend four and five years, four for the teachers, five for the paraprofessionals. And so we're pretty excited about that as well.
No, you read the motion.
He made a friendly amendment at the start, the committee recommendation.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Seven in favor, two absent.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your help.
Thank you. Okay, Counsel Memhard, back to number one.
Back to number one indeed, which is a memorandum from our city clerk and a 2025.
The city auditor has his hand up. I think it might have been about the previous vote.
Counselors.
Yep.
Thank you. With the payment being this week, could the counselors consider a motion to reconsider?
I made a motion to reconsider.
Second.
This is for the previous, previously voted, item number five?
Yep. So motion been made by Counselor Grow, seconded by Counselor Gilman on the reconsideration. Do we need to go to roll call? No? I don't think so. All those in favor?
No.
No?
All those opposed?
No.
Motion fails. Seven to zero.
Zero to seven.
Zero to seven, seven to zero. It's a failure. With two absents. It's gonna be three soon.
I may sacrifice myself for you.
It's, it is the last meeting of the year, I think.
All right, Counselor Memhard, now we can continue on to number one.
Does that mean you're serving nutmeg and rum? Is that?
Yeah. Something like that.
The first item on the Budget and Finance agenda from last Thursday is a memorandum from our city clerk and an SBT, Special Budgetary Transfer Number 13 for 2025 in the amount of $8,885.07, as well as a second SBT 15, 2025, in the amount of $373.01. And these are both for election police details on November 5th, 2024, and the post-election tabulation, which was occurred on November 13th, 2024, and I so move.
Second. Motion made by Counsel Memhard, seconded by Counselor Worthy. And this is a roll call.
Counselor Grow?
Yes.
Counselor Majota is absent. Counselor Memhard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan is absent. Counselor Worthy?
Yes.
Counselor Benson?
Yes, thank you. Gloucester Police Department.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counselor Grace?
Yes.
Counselor Gross?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor, zero opposed, two absent. The motion passes.
The second item on tonight's agenda from Budget and Finance is a memorandum from our police chief requesting acceptance of the fiscal year.
Excuse me?
Nope, nope. Second.
I tried to slip that by you. I packaged them together, if you didn't notice.
No, you gotta do the second one.
Well, then, on a motion by Counselor Gross, seconded by Counselor Worthy, Budget and Finance voted, I roll call three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council approve special budgetary transfer 2025 SBT 15 in the amount of $373.01 from the registration police detail account number, as noted, to police uniform shift differentials account number, as noted, for the purpose of reimbursement of police details in the November 5th, 2024 state election and the November 13th, 2024 post-election tabulation, and I so move.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Memhard, seconded by Counselor Grow. Discussion. Anybody worried about the one penny? Or no? Don't want to spend some time on that?
Oh, man.
Just want to thank the Gloucester Police Department for all their hard work.
Count the clerk.
They're paid for it.
The clerk's department. Roll call.
Counselor Grow?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Aye.
Counselor Worthy?
Yes.
Counselor Benson?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counselor Grace?
Yes.
Counselor Gross?
Yes.
The motion passes, seven in favor, zero opposed, two absent.
Item number two from the Budget and Finance Committee meeting of last Thursday is a memorandum from the police chief requesting acceptance of a 2025, fiscal year 2025 state 911 training grant, and this is in the amount of $98,848.09. Shall I read the motion?
Yes, please.
On a motion by Counselor Memhard, seconded by Counselor Worthy, Budget and Finance Committee voted by roll call three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council accept under Mass General Law 4453A, a state grant from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, a fiscal year 2025 state 911 department training pro-grant program in the amount of $98,848.09. The grant period is from November first, November se- fourteenth, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and there is no local match for this grant, and I so move.
Second. Motion made by Councilor Memhard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. This is an annual grant that we get. Councilor Grow?
Yeah, I, I just want to take a moment to remind people in general how much this city relies on grants in every single department, in every possible way in the city, and that, that the things that we get to do and have done in terms of training and, and opportunities and infrastructure and all that depend very heavily on these grants that department heads go out and seek and, and apply for and, and get. So when people say that we can do without grant money in the city, they're fooling themselves because a lot is.
On the motion.
It is on the motion, and I'm saying, I'm supporting this motion 100%.
Thank you.
And it's because we need our, our department heads to be going out and getting grants like this.
That's right. Yes.
I, I just want to say I agree 1,000% with my fellow counsel.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, six to zero, seven to zero, two absent.
Item number three is a memorandum from the sustainability coordinator requesting our acceptance of EECBG municipal building envelope and insulation improvement funding in the amount of $75,000, which as Councilor Gross would have us note, is another grant that the city is benefiting from. And this is on a motion by Councilor Gross, seconded by Councilor Worthley, budget and finance committee voted by roll call three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council accept, under Mass General Law Chapter forty-four fifty-three A, a federal grant from the U.S. Department of Energy passed through the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources for a fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six energy efficiency and conservation block grant in the amount of $75,000 for the purpose to fund municipal buildings' weatherization and insulation projects in various municipal buildings. The grant period is from November first, twenty twenty-four, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, with a local match requirement of $687.25, and I so move.
Second. Motion made by Councilor Memhard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. We do have Bailey McCall is with us. If you have any comments that you'd like to make, Bailey, or would you like to just answer questions?
Hi, I can do either, as, thank you for hearing us out on this. I want to say this was a grant got, that was applied for by Dana Martin and Mike Hale, helping the community development department in Gloucester pursue energy efficiency and decarbonization through the CART plan that the city's created, just furthering the goals of also lowering utility bills to help out lower-income residents. This is greatly beneficial for the comfort of people within municipal buildings, improving our energy efficiency, decarbonization, and lowering our utility rates.
Okay, discussion. Don't make it hotter in here. No, we're, we're energy saving here. We're a quote. Councilor Benson? Benson, Benson.
Councilor Benson, just my question is, first off, thank you for all your work on this, and this, we're talking about insulation, and as you said, this is, would help the city improve our municipal buildings with home heating, with heating cost, et cetera, is that correct?
Yes.
So again, this would, this could, this grant will also help us lower our heating cost, is that correct?
Yep, we're looking at over 12,000 thermes saved annually. For utility costs, we're looking at a savings of a little over $13,000 annually as well.
So this will save the city budget, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Be nice if it would save the budget, but. Save the, savings within the budget. No. Okay. Are we ready? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The aye opposed? The ayes have it, seven to zero, two absent. Councilor Memhard?
Item number four is.
I would, I would entertain a motion to take number four, six, and seven as a consent agenda item. We don't have anyone to present on any of these.
Okay. Well, they all, they all are just booking more money that's coming to us, thanks to the good work of the staff of the city of Gloucester. But the first is a memorandum from our public health director requesting acceptance of an additional $37,500 of funding for the prevention, prevention and early childhood grant, and this is funded through the, a lot of initials here, substance abuse and mental health services administration passed through the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, Bureau of Substance Abuse Services, a prevention and early childhood services grant, and again, the total amount was $37,500. The next item is number five.
Number six.
Number five is done, number six is a memorandum from the archives committee requesting our acceptance of a donation that they have received in the amount of $50. And number seven is a memorandum from our director of elder services requesting acceptance of donations supporting the Gloucester Council on Aging and the Rosebaker Senior Center, amount totaling $2,241.96. And those are from Marilyn Grant, Julie Pease Capello, Margaret Gasperoni, Marilyn Grant, Eubot Lee Baum, Carolyn Abram, Brian Sullivan, Juanita Garan, Barry McKay, and Fred Sheffalo, for a total of $2,241.96. And I move that we accept above three.
A second. Motion made by Councilor Memhard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. All right, seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, seven in favor, two absent. Bailey, I neglected to thank you for all you do as our sustainability coordinator. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys for having me here on the team, it's wonderful to be in Gloucester.
Check in with you next year. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
There are no standing committee reports for ONA and PND because there were no meetings. We have no scheduled public hearings, so next up is for council vote. The city council vote to suspend the implementation of GCO Chapter Five, Article Five, short-term rentals to April first, twenty twenty-five.
I'll let, say in a motion?
So moved.
Discussion, or is it evident? Council Worthley?
Thank you. I think that we did good work on our ordinance back in, I think it was September that we voted on it, and the goal was have this to be implemented for January first. As we know, there's shortage in staff in the building inspector's office as well as the IT department. Here we might have someone soon in the IT department, but we've lost another person there in the last month or so. And so it's challenging for the city staff to be able to pull this together, and I think that's, you know, I think that's going to happen when we pass laws, things happen in time, and then the administration has to administer that. I appreciate the building inspector and IT department saying, we can't do this in the next three weeks. I would like to throw out this for discussion. It's hard to know that they'll be ready the next three or four months, and we might need to continue again, but also keep in mind that the people who would be registering would be in the beginning of their seasons, literally running Airbnbs while trying to figure out registration and things like that. I wonder, and I hadn't thought about this until just now, that maybe we look at a slightly later date to give a little more time for both the industry and just as importantly, maybe more importantly, the city staff.
That's not the motion in front of us.
No, I'm saying, can we make an amendment to change the date to a later time, like the end of the season?
You can, you can make the amendment, I mean, you know, see if you get a second.
I'm just seeing if there's a atmosphere, if the council.
They have a six-month period to register, so.
We're saying it's not going, the registration is going to start April first, and they have six months in that time.
Right in the ordinance.
Sorry, I hadn't.
Hundred eighty days.
I just thought by changing the date, we're changing something else, okay? So April first to whatever, October first.
Want to make an amendment, make an amendment.
Just discussion. I am, yeah, I'd like to make an amendment to change it to July first.
You have a second on the amendment? No second, sorry, amendment fails.
Didn't fail? Did you make it to the table?
Didn't, didn't make it, didn't make it.
It's fine.
Do we have a, do we have any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it, seven to zero, two absent. And now we have, I'll read it. Individual counselors discussions, well, nope, we don't have anything for that. Counselors' request to the mayor. I go first, but I was, I jumped again. Councilor Grow?
Thank you. First off, I want to, I want to thank the mayor for the, or whoever put the microphone there, that's a, that's a big improvement. This is.
Brian Lloyd.
Hey, Brian Lloyd, you're amazing. Very quickly, this is our last meeting of the year, and it's been a year, been quite a year, a lot of stuff going on. I appreciate all of my colleagues, the input, the debate, the discussion, some of it fun and some of it not so fun, but I do want to thank you all for serving on this council with me and, and me with you. I wish you all a wonderful holiday season, however you celebrate and whoever you celebrate with, do it with gusto, have a great New Year. We'll see you on January first at Rocky Neck, plunging into the cold frigid waters of the Cove there, so enjoy yourselves and Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and all the above.
It's Councilor Majota, then Councilor Nolan, oh, no, then Councilor Memhard.
What Councilor Grow said.
Okay. Then we have Councilor Worthley, right?
So I will incur with Councilor Grow and Councilor Memhard, and to all our city staff, however they celebrate, we should give them a shout out as well. This also is a moment I like to just reflect, we are pretty much at the 50% mark in our term. At this point next year, some of us may not be returning, and I like that, maybe some people will like, like that moment, but I would like to use this as a moment to say, well, I'm going to make this a little longer than you'd like, but we passed the renewable energy ordinance last year. Last year we passed a renewable energy ordinance, I had thought about it at the end of my term 20 years ago, and had I got it in, maybe things would have been different, right? And so I think right now, as we are looking at next year, if there are things that you want to, I appreciate the stare down, I'm not sure.
No, I don't, I don't, I couldn't, I didn't hear what you're talking about.
What I'm saying is that.
It's not a stare down.
Well, it looks like it, but okay. If you have things that you want to move forward, now is the time, because before you know it, we'll be in elections, the elections will be over, and then we'll be a year from now and saying goodbye to some people. So I just want to encourage people to put pen to paper, introduce the orders and the changes they'd like to seize before we run out of time. So the reason why I brought up the renewable energy thing is because I thought about 20 years ago, before my term expired, I ran out of time.
Thank you.
No problem, thank you.
Now we have Councilor Benson.
All right, well, thank you. Just one thing, I just spoke to a few constituents who are concerned with, as they're pedestrians, concerned with the speeding in and around the downtown area, just want to get people to continue to slow down, yield, pay attention while you're driving, and hopefully we can get some more enforcement in and around the downtown area with speeding. One constituent had called me, very concerned and nearly got struck, so I just want folks to really just slow down, pay attention. Also remind folks, we have some activities this upcoming weekend, check the calendar, and to all who are celebrating a very happy Christmas, to those who celebrate a happy Hanukkah, to those who celebrate as well as Happy Kwanzaa and other holidays as we celebrate, and have a very joyful 2025, and peace to the world, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Gilman?
That's a hard act to follow.
Peace to the world.
So I just want to, I mean. Thank you. I'm glad you enjoyed.
No cookie war.
I'm glad that you enjoyed my cookies, thank you. So I just wanted to remind people that specifically on Saturday is the Middle Street Walk, and if you want to learn about all the events, you can go on www.middlestreetwalk.org to get all the details, it's a lot of fun. And the other thing, as I wanted to, and yes, there is a hayride, and I also wanted to remind people that from 4:30 to 5:00 on Saturday night is the Lobster Trap tree lighting at Sullivan Jacobs Landing, and that's awesome, and thank you for the folks that spent all their volunteer time putting that together. And counselors, thank you for our first year. I think we made a lot of progress on many things, and it's been a pleasure serving you. Tony, you can't gavel me right now because I bowless, but I saw you going for the gavel. I'm watching you closely. Put the gavel down, I gave you cookies.
No, you've been, you've been on your best behavior, don't blow it now.
Thank you. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Holidays, Happy New Years, thank you.
Councilor Grace?
My request to the mayor is if we could amp up efforts to work on safety in the area where the Centennial Ave and Washington Street intersection, there was yet another accident yesterday, there's been numerous accidents just in the past month, and I really think it's high time we take it very seriously because it's only a matter of time before there's a serious injury. Secondly, I would just shout out to Mike Hale and company for getting the school bus stop sign down near the end of Commonwealth Ave and where it meets with Washington Street. My constituents and the children are very, very grateful. And lastly, I just wanted to say thank you to my colleagues up here on the dais that it's, this year has flown by, I was absolutely terrified going into this position, and if you don't want me, it's his fault, he pushed it, you know, but I am so grateful for all of your support and your patience for my endless questions that I am continually asking, so kudos to all of you. Oh, thank you. But, and I wish you all a very happy holiday and to, to all of the people out there in Gloucester land, enjoy, be kind, be happy, thank you.
Thank you. And thank all of you, my first year as president, you've made it exciting and wondrous, and thank you to all the citizens of Gloucester who have allowed us to sit here on their behalf, and I hope everyone has a lovely and a safe holiday. And at that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Grow, seconded by Councilor Worthley, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
See you next year.
Thank you, Grace.